Well, I think we're close enough. If you would please just join me in standing for our flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. It's always nice to begin a meeting with honoring one of our longtime employees. Actually, kind of a bittersweet time because we want to honor them, but at the same time, it's always sad to see them go. And it's not a... It's pretty uncommon to have someone who has devoted 42 years of their life to any occupation. And it's a special day to have someone in Tulare County that we can honor today. And this is for a longtime employee in our Health Human Services Department. She retires as a deputy Health Human Services Director for Mental Health. And before I go any further, I'd like to invite our director to please come forward. Doctor, please come forward and say a few words on behalf of your employee.
I will. Good morning Chairman Worthley, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau and Ms. Bales-Lang. Today is indeed a celebratory time as Cheryl Perkins retires from Tulare County after nearly 42 years of service. It's actually 41 years and eight months, to be exact. This time trajectory is not only a noteworthy career accomplishment by anybody's standards, but especially remarkable during a time when the average employee changes his or her employ every three to five years. Cheryl actually began her career in Tulare County in 1969. She was hired by the Department of Social Services, or otherwise known then as the Welfare Department, just after graduating from high school. She was employed as a junior clerk typist. I have a little bit of difficulty envisioning that right now, but... She was employed as a junior clerk typist and subsequently held all related support classifications through the position of supervisor until 1974. She was then promoted through the eligibility series, including supervisor. She worked in welfare subsequently as a training officer and finally a program manager. In 1998, Cheryl was transferred to the Department of Mental Health, reclassed as a program manager for children's services. She there provided direct oversight to a number of units, including several multidisciplinary teams. In 1999, Cheryl moved again, this time to the position of division manager over alcohol and drugs, and then several months later, joined John Davis at the time and assumed the position of division manager over adult services. And finally, in 2005, as Supervisor Worthley noted, she was promoted to the division of deputy director where she continues to work for a couple of more weeks. Right? Okay. So, in addition to detailing a laudable career, which I wanted to do, it should be noted that this is really a lesson for those just embarking on perhaps young careers. Good things may come to those who wait, but more often in the work environment, good things come to those who are thoughtful, intentional, and competent people. Above all, good things come to people willing to make... Take chances and people willing to move beyond their personal and professional sphere of comfort in the service of client care. On a final note, the number and range of diverse people who have benefited by Cheryl's tutelage, excuse me, is likely obvious. Always generous with her knowledge, quick to offer any colleague assistance, fair-minded in her approach, especially in disciplinary matters. Frequently fielding calls late at night and on weekends without complaint. They're all descriptions which highlight her team approach to problem solving and service delivery. But above all, most noteworthy has been Cheryl's unwavering commitment to the clients we all have the privilege to serve in Tulare County, and this commitment is absolutely unsurpassed. So, on that note, Cheryl, you can make your way forward and either take a couple of pot shots or make some pardon comments.
I just want to take this opportunity to say to you thank you. I wouldn't have imagined that in 1969, when I began employment for Tulare County, that it would culminate in such a rewarding career. And I've had the opportunity to work in every district in the county as well, serving your constituents in a variety of ways. So, I feel very honored today. And I couldn't have been as successful as I feel that I have been without the support of my staff. And it is the staff of the agency and the county with whom I work that really do the job, and they do it well, and I thank them for their support. Thank you.
Don't leave, Cheryl.
Don't want to mess up the makeup.
Thank you, Dr. Dirksen, for your kind words. I was thrown off for a minute because Cheryl Dirksen, Cheryl Perkins, threw me off. Like, wait a minute, have I got the name right? I was afraid to say the wrong name.
John refers to us as Cheryl Squared.
Cheryl Squared, yes. Well, you know, it is an honor. And the late Jim Maples, Supervisor of District Five, used to say that the highest honor that the county can provide you is with the seal of the county. And that's what I have for you this morning. And I always thought that was sort of a solemn occasion until John Davis told me they referred to it as the giant coaster. Something that's lost something. I don't... I don't understand that. But it is still the highest honor we can provide because we're precluded by law from giving any kind of cash bonus or anything. So, in appreciation of your 42 years of service and dedication, and I think really the important word there is dedication, to the community and Tulare County, it's my honor to present this with you from the Board of Supervisors, and thank you, Cheryl, for your service to us. And Cheryl, I was just curious. When you started off as a clerk typist, was it the manual typewriter?
Actually, it was an IBM Selectric.
Oh, they had Selectrics. I remember the Selectrics. That was a great machine.
Trust me. And this will hang in a place of honor in my home, right next to my husband's. So, we have a matching coaster.
Very good. Thank you very much. I would love to give my colleagues an opportunity to say something to Cheryl at this time, and I'll start with Mr. Ennis on my right.
Cheryl, thank you so much. You know, you live over in my district, actually from my hometown area out there, Terabell area, so real proud of you guys and both of you, and proud of you and what you've done for the county for 42 years. That is a commitment. That's a long time. I spent 34 years in the car business, and I know that was a long time. So, congratulations to you. I know you'll be missed by not only the people within your organization, but throughout the county and the county family. So, thank you so much for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Ennis?
Cheryl, since you grew up in the Terabella area, you guys must be related. But in the last several years, Cheryl, it's always been a pleasure to work with you. You always have a positive attitude. Basically, always have a smile on your face, and I think you've been a very important part of our mental health program. Now, before we get down to Supervisor Vanderpoel, I was thinking about, you know, 42 years, and I was going to wear my shoes that I bought in college that were 40 years old. And that's more than twice as long as Pete's been alive. Almost twice as much. But we're going to really miss you because I know how important you were to the program and the dedication you've had over the years. So, thank you very much for your service.
Fox? Wow, that makes me reflect. 1969, my shoes for sure were big. I literally wrote in my book, Cheryl, and I'd like you to look at it later, misprint over the number of years that you've worked here because I thought there's no way she's such a young, vibrant, hard-working person. How could that be? And I wrote that in there, didn't I? So, but thank you. I mean, I had the pleasure of being on the Mental Health Board for a couple of years and seeing your... Some of the fruits of your hard work and you will... And your backbone and you will be hard to replace, but thank you for your many years of service. You're wonderful.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Cheryl, thank you very much for your many, many years of service. You know, I sit here and I just think, 42 years, man, that is amazing. And one of my fellow supervisors made the comment already, so I don't need to say that you served longer than I've even been alive, but...
But you did.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention that because that, you know, employees that can actually say that is... I mean, and that's not saying that I'm super young, but that's just saying that you really are dedicated to Tulare County, and you're dedicated to the people you serve. You know, it's not... It's more than just a day-in, day-out job. You love what you do, and you love the people that you help. And to work for the county for that number of years and to help as many people as you've helped, especially in the programs that you've worked in where people really do need the help and they look to you for aid in time of need, I just really, really applaud you for all that you've done. And I know that it takes a great team, but it also takes a great team leader, and you were definitely that person. So, thank you for your many years of service. You're going to be missed, and I'm going to miss looking across the room at the Mental Health Board meetings and seeing you over there. But you're welcome to come anytime, just to hang out or just say hi. So, thank you for your years of service, and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't usually do... May I make a comment?
Absolutely.
When I will have my 30th anniversary in February. Yes, I know it's longer than Supervisor Vanderpoel has been alive, and I've dealt with countless county employees. When you first start in the county council's office, you're sort of thrown in this giant bureaucracy, and you really have no idea of what we do and how we do it. And there's some people that just stick in your mind. Cheryl is one of the people who, when I needed a guide to try to understand the intricacies of the welfare system, as we called it then, was a tremendous help and education to me, and I've never forgotten that, and I wanted to thank her very much.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to... Our next presentation, item number two, is a declaration, proclamation declaring September 2010 as library card signup month in Tulare and Tulare County, and we want to encourage our residents to sign up their children to get public library cards, and maybe the parents could do as well. And Mr. Lewis is here this morning. Brian, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor, CAO, Council. We in the library think that the library card is the most important card in your wallet or your purse, especially for a young child, because the possibilities with learning how to read, learning how to ask for what you need, learning how to utilize information properly is the most important skill you have in life. And the libraries do so much more than just provide books and information. Just about any service that's available in the counties or the cities, whether it be mental health, medical help, looking for jobs, advancing your career, we do it the library for people. So, it's just a great resource for everyone. It's the great equalizer. And we're having the signup this month, and we're encouraging people to sign up, and like you said, Supervisor Worthley, both adults and children, but especially the children. And we'll look forward to the proclamation. Now, part of what we're doing is we're starting a read program, and we're developing read posters and read bookmarks that will be displayed at all of the libraries and given out. And the idea is to get people in the community who are leaders, people who are admired, to be on the read posters to encourage people to read, to have some effect on, gee, if they think it's important to read, maybe I think it should be important to read. And the first people we're having is the board. We took your pictures the other day. Your poster's going to be unveiled one at a time, and we will be... Well, you know, I don't have much of a chance to brown nose, so this is a good opportunity. Davis does it all the time, so I don't get much of a chance.
Can we bleep that from the video or the audio?
Well, I was going to say that this is going to be more brown-nosing you since Gary Conkle retired, but I thought that might be tacky, so I didn't say it. But anyway, after a certain period of time, your posters and bookmarks will come down, and we'll be trying to get pictures of community leaders, possibly teachers, that are important to the kids and the students for their areas. So, we'll be taking the pictures and hopefully putting them in schools, putting them in all of the libraries, just to get the message out there and have it ever-changing. Now, the first one, not yet, not yet, is of Mr. Ennis. And what we did is we took your pictures, and there's a certain amount of backgrounds that you can choose, and we chose backgrounds that we thought emphasized part of the best parts of all of you. Mr. Ennis is a respected businessman, a nuts-and-bolts type of guy who wants to get something done, but wants to build something solid, not just something showing. So, would you please reveal Mr. Ennis's read poster? Audience?
Like the background. I just like seeing Mike like that. He looks real sharp.
Good back. Thank you.
How did my face get so long?
We made you look a little older, Supervisor, so...
I feel it every morning when I get up.
Supervisor Ashida is a farmer. He knows the value of the land, so we picked something with the background that was a little earthy. Supervisor Ashida preaches and the wisdom of saving for a rainy day, knowing that not every year's going to be a good year, and he emphasizes that in his speeches. So, Supervisor Ashida's poster is with a brick background to emphasize the earth and because bricks come from the earth.
I thought you were going to have my banker standing next to me.
He didn't want to get close to you.
Couldn't find him.
Nice picture.
Thank you. Supervisor Worthley is a little more cerebral than some. He's the longest-serving... I didn't say who. I just said some. The longest-serving member on the board, and he looks forward. He's kind of, I guess you could call him the Carl Sagan of the board.
Oh.
Off the space.
Those are the book, No Less Than Victory.
Supervisor Cox, if nothing else is...
Be careful.
Is known for his caring of community and of this nation, of his church and of people. He's a very patriotic, solid rooter for this country and for the county. He makes no bones about it, and Supervisor Cox.
Can I get those in eight-by-tens?
Get those what?
Can I get those in eight-by-tens?
Eight-by-tens? Yes, you can. And then we come to Supervisor Vanderpoel, who is constantly being teased for his youth. But the youth is also a positive. Supervisor Vanderpoel has a youthful enthusiasm. He relates to young people, which is positive for the county, and he just has an energy that those of us who are grown up don't have. I was going to say... So, with that in mind, and I want to say before you reveal it, is I asked Supervisor Vanderpoel if we could use this poster and kid him a little bit. He graciously said yes, but I wasn't kidding about his appealing to the youth and the young people in communities. I've seen it happening as a wonderful asset.
That's nice.
With the Crayolas. And I must tell you, Supervisor, every female I've shown that to has said, oh, he's cute.
Supervisor Cox said he expected a box of diapers behind me, and I guess that's a good thing that that wasn't the case.
It's also taken, so you can let him know that.
So, those are the posters. They will... We will be making more of them. We'll be making bookmarks with the same things. These are for you to keep, if you would like, and put them in here. We'll be making more of them. And with that, if you have any questions about the program?
I do have one question for you, Brian. I would just be curious, during this month that it's... You're reaching out to get as many signups as you can for library cards. Are you working with the school districts and trying to get... Maybe have a presentation or reach out to each school? Because I know that some of the unincorporated areas are a long ways from here, so to speak, where the main library branch is and may not have that level of outreach. So, I was just curious what you're going to be doing to be reaching out.
Well, the way we're going to reach out to the schools is to go to the schools and to get the principal or the teachers with the read programming. At that time, we'll have a library card drive. Right now, so early in the year, because we're going to require from the schools, encourage them to have the kids come with the applications, but they're going to have to verify the signature of the parent force, and that takes quite a bit of time. So, we want to do that as a whole package.
Thank you.
Brian, I'm going to come down in a second and give the proclamation, but one of the things I have really tried to push is that, you know, to participate in school activity, students have to maintain a certain GPA. And so, I have really encouraged them to take advantage of the library from the standpoint of accessing tutoring, live tutoring opportunities online that are available to those who have a Tulare County library card. And I think that's another avenue, especially as you look at coaches and wanting their children to be able to be eligible to continue to participate in sports and so forth. They should be some of our greatest advocates for getting a library card, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Well, thank you.
And I like this first line on the proclamation. It says, whereas the smartest card is the library card. I like that. So, anyway, I'm going to bring this proclamation down to you.
Thank you, Brian. Great Institute. And this, of course, is signed by all the board members. Proclamation that Supervisor hereby proclaims September 10 of 2010 as library card signup month in Tulare County and encourage everyone to sign up for a library card. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
And Brian, I'll also mention, thank you very much for those posters. They look really good, and I hope that they achieve the ends that you're setting out to achieve.
Oh, thank you. We do too.
Okay. Anybody want to say anything else, or are we all good?
I... Great program.
Great program.
Had a question about that. I'll volunteer. You need volunteers to help go sign up kids for cards. I'll be there.
Action item. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you for being here this morning, gentlemen.
Thank you, Walter.
And thank you for your presentations. At this time, we're happy to have with us Tina Terrell from the Sequoia National Forest regarding the Sequoia National Monument Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Tina is the forest supervisor, a very powerful position in the Forest Service governments, and we're very privileged to have you here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Chairman. Just want to basically give you an opportunity to let you know that we will be having two public meetings for the draft environmental impact statement and draft management plan I presented two weeks ago to the board. The first public meeting will happen tomorrow at the Porterville Elks Lodge from 6:00 to 9:00. That would basically be a public meeting for the public to come and get information more about the draft documents. I will be there along with about 20 of my interdisciplinary team members to answer questions and provide more site-specific information about what is actually in the draft documents. We then will have another public meeting on Saturday in Bakersfield to get the people from Kern County from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock at the Doubletree Hotel right off of 158. And that again is for another public meeting to get the people in Kern County. And then we'll have a third meeting in Fresno next Tuesday. So, I just wanted to give the board members the opportunity, let your constituents know that there will be a public meeting for the people in Tulare County and Porterville next week, and then there will be a subsequent meeting dealing with the science process on October 12th, which I'll come back and brief the board again. So, I just want to say thank you for your support and for your continued interest in what happens on the giant Sequoia National Monument.
Thank you, Tina. At this time, we have a presentation regarding an update on our Loop Bus service, and to make the presentation, we have Dan Fox, Tulare County Transit Coordinator. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, CAO, Council. I'm here today to give an update on the Loop Bus, give you a little history. The Loop Bus was accepted by your board in April of 2007 when you approved the Loop Bus operations. The Loop Bus was an outgrowth of the Tulare County gang intervention, and that was a true collaboration between the City of Visalia Police Department, Visalia Unified School District, Tulare County Sheriff, the District Attorney, probation, Parks and Recreation, transit, your Board of Supervisors, youth services agencies throughout Tulare County, and faith-based groups. At that time, a need was identified for transportation for at-risk youth. So, out of that became the Loop Bus program, which started in 2007, in the summer of 2007, where the City of Visalia and the county started Loop Bus operations where we were bringing at-risk youth to recreational opportunities over that summer. And the county's particular participation was to bring people from Ivanhoe and Goshen into those opportunities to connect with the Visalia Loop Bus and to bring them into lunch programs and those are opportunities. The initial Loop Bus program has been and since has been paid for using Measure R local sales tax money. Over the years, the ridership has grown. Over the years, the ridership has grown. In 2007, '08, our first year, we'd had about 1,500 riders. In 2008, '09, we brought it up to 2,300 riders. In 2009, '10, we're up to 4,700 riders. And this year, we're hoping to reach about 7,000 riders. The typical services that we provide include that fixed route service where we go to a place and pick people up and bring them to a recreational opportunity. Another one that we've been providing is Quea High School where their after-school program, we pick up students at the school and bring them to the Exeter Boys and Girls Club. The other type that's developed since is one-time trips or sports leagues where we bring people to flag football or soccer leagues. We do nonprofit trips to McDermott Field House. Transportation to sober graduation and college night events are typical kind of trips that we do now. And today, we are promoting the Loop Bus operation through a media blitz. Yesterday, we did a press conference. We've had some TV coverage the last few days. The print media has been doing presentations of us. And tomorrow, we invite everybody to Porterville where we'll be doing a presentation at the Porterville Library at 10:00 o'clock to try to create more activity and opportunities in the Porterville area. Some of the people that use the bus, we asked some of the people to come visit us today. And one of those is Angela Ruiz Alvarez. And she's going to speak for a few minutes about how that service affects her and how it works for her.
Good morning Supervisors. I'm glad to be here to represent Cutler Rosa Youth Programs. And we've used the Loop Bus many times. And Supervisor Cox, I remember you were giving out ice creams the first time you were trying to get kids on that bus. So I'm waiting for my ice cream. We've used the bus many different ways. We've used it for field trips to McDermott Field House. We've used it for different field trips. What we mainly use it for is our middle school. If you know middle school students, they're very hard to attract to participate in anything educational. They're a whole beast of kids that you have to do song and dance to get them to participate. So what we've done is we've incorporated sports into our activities. So if they want to join sports, they have to do the academics first and then they can do the sports. And we participate in our Visalia League here. Now, as you know, transportation is costly, especially school transportation. With budgets so tight, it's very hard for me to pay for transportation, a bus to come to Visalia weekly. So the Loop Bus, we've used it now for two years and it has saved my program so many dollars that I can put to use at educational activities. So I want to say thank you for that. Most of the kids that are in my program are kids who need to be there because of education purposes, or maybe they're not the best students or they have issues. So when you talk about high-risk students or at-risk students, that's definitely the people that I work with. You would not, you could not imagine that a bus could be so vital to a program, but it is to our program. It's changed the lives of our students because they are so into the sports, we've won two trophies. I don't want to rub it into the Visalia schools, but we've won two trophies and that has just boosted their self-esteem, which also boosts their educational scores. So I wanted to thank you personally and to let you know that I hope you continue to support the Loop. I saw the beautiful buses outside, so I'm really excited. Because the one problem with the Loop Bus is that you have to get your information in first so that you could be able to use the Loop Bus because it was very limited. But every time we use the Loop Bus, we've never had any problems. It's, like I said, saved my program so much money, so I thank you for that.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate that.
Okay. And before, we have two of our new Loop Buses outside. The interesting thing is this time, we've added a DVD player system with two 17-inch monitors in each bus. And we're planning to have video presentations while we bring the youth at our activities. And we invite everybody to step outside when you do take a break to view the new buses. But I need to acknowledge some people that have worked hard on this program. And one is one of you, a visionary behind the Loop Bus Supervisor Cox, who has been the driving force behind the Loop Bus since day one. Also, our working partner, MV Transportation, they're the ones that have to come every day and make it all happen. And there've been challenges. So I want to acknowledge Janet Todd, the manager, and Gabriel Tabarez, who is the Loop Bus Coordinator for MV. And then the board representatives, Jeff and Jed, have done many hours coordinating activities and processing, marketing the program. So we wanted to acknowledge them too. Also, anybody who needs more information on the Loop Bus should go to the Step Up TC website. It's just been upgraded. It's a wealth of information about not only the Loop Bus, but other activities that are available for at-risk youth. And I'm available for questions?
Are there any questions?
If I can, no questions, but I want to echo Dan said. The staff has been just absolutely tremendous. We, you know, Dan, probably at the top of the list because the things he's asked to do, he's asked to juggle, you know, buses, times, places from one end of the county sometimes the other. And he's done a wonderful job. And he made a comment yesterday that really stuck with me is, well, we haven't turned down anybody yet, which I think speaks, you know, volumes about Dan's ability to work with MV and get the buses there when the youth need them. A sidebar here, he mentioned the Quea High School students being taken to the Boys and Girls Club in Exeter. They just received their API scores recently. And the principal there told me that the youth using that bus going to the Wolf Program, API scores increased by 97.5 percent.
Whoa. Wow. Amazing.
So very successful program for the, and I think for the very minimal amount of money that we invest as a board, money, well, probably some of the best money this board will spend.
Thank you Supervisor Cox.
I would just make one comment too, and thank you, Dan, and your staff as well, because I think that the great part about this program is that you are so innovative in your office. You know, I appreciate the fact that you've helped in my district on several occasions. And there's also a new program that's coming and you're working with us there. And that's an ROTC program for the residents of Tulare and the surrounding areas that attend Tulare High Schools. And that's really going to be a great asset to the community and a great asset for those at-risk youth to be able to, instead of being unproductive after school or causing trouble in many cases, be able to go to a program where they can actually create a future for themselves. So I really appreciate you doing that and thank you to all your staff as well.
Why, welcome.
Chairman, yesterday, we unveiled the new Loop Bus in Exeter. Supervisor Cox and Jed were in attendance with the police chief, city council. It was a community effort. And we had the unveiling of the new bus at the headquarters of the Boys and Girls Club in Exeter. At that time, I received a note and it reads as follows. Dear Tulare County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of Quea High School students and staff, I'd like to express our gratitude to the board for allowing us the opportunity to provide the working on our future Wolf Program at Exeter Boys and Girls Teen Center. This program would not be possible without the Loop Bus services. Our students have shown improvement in academic growth, 9.7 points in our API, a decrease in discipline, and an increase in attendance. We believe in our students and would like to thank you again for your support and belief in our students and sharing our vision. So we are making a difference with this bus. And sometimes when we do youth programs, it's very hard to measure if you're successful. And I think the Step Up program has been coordinated by Supervisor Cox, has proven its success. And I think the Board of Supervisors have shown that we are committed to the Step Up program.
Mr. Nance?
Here. Yes. And I'm very pleased that we're going to have that workshop in Porterville tomorrow. And I'll be attending. And I know that Supervisor Cox and Jed, and there'll be a bunch of people there. But we need to get that out in my area as well as Porterville and surrounding area and make use of that Loop Bus. I think it'll improve the whole community. So thank you.
And it's a wonderful day in Tulare County. And then we have two Loop Buses outside. Whenever you get an opportunity to see them...
We're going to take a little five-minute break now so we can go do that. We will want to try to keep it to five minutes. We need to get back. We've got a timed item. But one thing I wanted to ask you, you're not going to show Ferris Bueller's Day Off. With that, we'll take a five-minute break. Come on. Go get the bus.
My own seat. When you said about growing up, anyone's going to say, "I don't think you're going to get any taller, Pete." But... There they are. Hiding in the back. Back there eating cookies.
Uh-huh.
I meant to call you and ask, but I don't know what your Friday looks like. I have a family thing come up on Friday.
We're missing our CAO and County Council.
I think I just have one thing.
Are they eating cookies?
I think they're still out front.
All right, the board is back in session. And this time, we have public comments. I have two written requests for public comments. And of course, we're not precluded from making public comments beyond this, but Richard Garcia has requested to make a comment. I understand Richard has a brief video he's going to show us. And I said, as long as it's within three minutes, you're good to go.
Okay. Richard Garcia, 1038 East LaSalle Avenue, Visalia. I'm a member of the Minto King Group Sierra Club.
Richard, can you pull that mic just towards you where some of the people can hear you on the video?
I'm here this morning to ask for your cooperation to help us protect some animals that live up in Balch Park. As you probably know, Balch Park is part of the Sequoia National Forest System. In fact, it is included in the monument. The, let's back up here. What we want to do is protect these particular animals that are very rare and endangered. And they, Balch Park is part of their habitat. They include the Pacific Fisher, the California Wolverine, the American Martin, and the Sierra Nevada Red Fox. The Pacific Fisher is on the list of candidates to be included in the endangered species list. There's a very small population, we believe, in our southern Sierras. And there's a population up in the northern Sierras. The California Wolverine is a state-threatened animal. The American Martin, very rare. In fact, it was one thought that it was extinct up here in your area of the park. But not too long ago, they found one roadkill. And so they feel that there is a small population up there. These animals all inhabit the kind of the elevation, the kind of forests that are in the Balch Park area. And then we've got the Sierra Nevada Red Fox. You may have read in local paper that they spotted one of these just north of Yosemite. And we're hoping that these animals can make a comeback. There have been people that said they think they saw this animal up in the southern Sierras, but it's always a debate on whether they saw a red fox or a gray fox. Okay, the national park, what I want to do is talk to you about the rules as they pertain to having pets in the parks. Now, unlike the national parks, the Forest Service does allow you to bring your dog into the parks. They have some very reasonable regulations. Basically, you have to keep your dog on a leash or restrict its freedom. Basically, if you go into the park, keep Fluffy in the RV or the tent with you. And if you go out in the forest, keep him on a leash. All right? The county regulations are very similar, okay? These are county regulations. They also include one particular aspect that we really like, that pet waste should be cleaned up after the pet owner. It's a scientific biological fact that the single greatest vector of transmission of canine diseases to these wild animals is through contact of fecal matter, okay? So I know this regulation was probably adopted by the city dads years ago, and it probably had Mooney's Grove more in mind than Balch Park. But we feel it is a very reasonable request and we would like to work with you folks to educate the public that if they bring their dogs into the national forest, keep them on a leash to pick up after them. Now, there is one group of citizens that don't have to abide by these rules. And that is the guys that buy a hunting license and go bear hunting with hounds. They are allowed to release these packs of hounds. The hounds chase bears. We also feel that they would chase any other animals that they came across. They tree the bears and then the hunters shoot the bear out of the tree, okay?
How sporting.
Pardon?
I said, how very sporting.
How very sporting. Yes. We're not calling for a halt to bear hunting. We're only asking that the hunters abide by your regulations that make sense and help protect these animals up here. Now, the resolution that I have in front of you would send a message to the California Department of Fish and Game that you feel that the hunters should abide by the county regulations. I'm also, we're also going to be asking the National Forest Service people, in fact, I'll be talking to Tina tomorrow at the Giant Sequoia Monument Management Plan Meeting. We would like to have these regulations asking that all California citizens abide by those regulations as far as keeping their dogs in their leash in the national parks. I know you're probably thinking, well, you know, state law trumps county law. But this spring, the department decided they wanted to open up San Luis Obispo County to bear hunting. Normally, black bears weren't in that county, but there's some indication we do have a few. I don't know if you ever noticed, when you go to the coast and go request a grade, you'll see a sign, "Watch for Bears." There apparently is a few bears in there. And the hunters pushed the department to open up San Luis Obispo County to black bear hunting this year. The County Board of Supervisors wrote a letter to the California Department of Fish and Game protesting that. Their science was very spotty. They enlisted some Cal Poly students to do a study, which amounted to hanging cans of tuna into trees and looking at teeth marks of cans and looking at bear scouts. I don't think they even saw a bear, but they justified trying to open up San Luis Obispo County to black bear hunting this year. The County Board of Supervisors wrote a letter to them and passed a resolution. And they changed their mind. I have a copy of that resolution if you folks wanted to see it. So we think they would listen to you if you sent a message to the California Department of Fish and Game and just asked them for common sense compliance to the county's rules.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions? As you know, we are precluded by taking, for taking action on items when it's a public comment, it's not on our consent, I'm sorry, on our agenda today. But we will review this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have also requests from John Davis, our Director of Health and Human Services, to make an introduction this morning. Welcome, John.
Thank you. John Davis, Health and Human Services. I just wanted to take the time or a minute here to formally introduce our... or a minute here to formally introduce our new Director of Human Services, Jason Britt. He's been with our organization for over 15 years, and it is, as Supervisor Ashida once described, "We're growing our own." He came in as an eligibility worker. He took on jobs like the imaging and our Cal-Win implementation, which is that huge computer system you dealt with for about five years. We moved him to the Public Guardians Office as part of the program. He was there for a little over a year, and then we brought him back as a deputy director for Human Services. With David's retirement, which you all witnessed a while ago, we asked Jason to step up, and he has. And so, with that, I guess I'd like to introduce him to you and to your constituents so they formally know who the Director of Human Services is.
Welcome, Jason. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, John, Chairman, members of board. I am privileged to have this honor and to have this position, and I just look forward to continue serving our constituents and working with you to deliver effective human services programs in our county. So, thank you.
Very good. Congratulations to you again. Anybody else wishing during our public comment period to make a public comment? Seeing you now, we will close the public comment, and we'll take up our board supervisor.
Steve, you did have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir. I was a little too quick on the draw there. Come forward, please. You can use that microphone. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Robert Owen, 16151 Mustang Drive, Springville. I think this is the right time for me. I've been on the agenda here for quite some time on this land division.
Oh, Mr. Owen, I'm sorry. This is a matter coming up. This is a public hearing.
Yeah, we've got this coming up later?
It's coming up in a moment, yes. Give us a few more minutes. We're going to take care of a couple more items. We're a little late, but we'll get to you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Anybody else wishing to just during the public comment period? All right, now we'll close that and bring it back to the board for Board of Supervisory Matters. Begin with Mr. Vanderpoel.
I just have a couple things for today. Since we didn't meet last week, I wanted to make a comment about the Festival of Hope that was put on at the Tulare Outlet Mall Labor Day weekend. That was a great event. The Suicide Prevention Task Force put together a great presentation, and I really wanted to thank the staff of the program and also wanted to thank all the volunteers because that's what made it happen. There was a great effort, great outreach to inform the public about suicide prevention efforts and techniques, and I just thought it was a great program. I attended. It was a little hot, and other than that, the sidewalk art was beautiful, and there was a great turnout and really reached out to the public, so I thought that was great. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was the 9/11 blood drive that took place in the city of Tulare this Saturday, another great turnout. By the time that I left the event, there was already, I left about 11 o'clock, and there was already 346 pints of blood donated, or 436, I'm sorry, pints of blood donated by 11 o'clock. So, it was a great showing by the community of Tulare, and I really applaud all of their efforts to help give life back to those who may need a little bit of help. So, I really appreciated that and sure encourage everyone out there to give blood and give life when they have the opportunity to do so.
You know what I was thinking about the parade tomorrow in Tulare?
Oh, yeah, and then also the Tulare County Fair begins tomorrow. There is a parade beginning at 10 o'clock, and then the fair will open shortly thereafter. So, I look forward to a great event there, and I encourage everyone to go out. The fair will take place from Wednesday through Sunday, and it goes on all day long.
Mr. Cox?
Chalk art was great, sidewalk art. You've got to call it chalk art. This afternoon, 3:30 COS, the Visalia Campus will have a open house and the unveiling of the new gymnasium funded by Measure I, which I sit on the Oversight Committee, so folks are invited to attend that. On Saturday, attended the Taste of Arts Visalia event put on by the Consortium of Arts and was privileged to be one of the judges, and we brought the art back. We'll be putting that on the Internet soon. I wanted to share with the supervisors, there were several categories. One of them was seized the moment, which was there were just pieces of paper like this and materials there to draw with, and this was done by a 13-year-old La Jolla student from Visalia who won the Spur of the Moment contest. And then I think the other districts are all, some of the other districts are also represented. We had over 100 entries of art, several of them from schools. This is from a Los Tulace Middle School student who won, I believe, the Most Edible Award. And then we had the, well, there was a disagreement on this one, but this one won the Most Nutritious, and it is from a Stone Corral School. I believe that's out in Supervisor Ashida's.
No, my district.
That's in your district. So, this won the Most Nutritional because it depicted all of the food, most of the foods grown here in the valley, and it was kind of whimsical. And then the Best in Show and Most Artistic was from a student from Three Rivers, and all of the artwork had to do with, you know, things that are grown here in the valley and artwork that is edible. So, it was a very fun event. Several hundred people attended, and I was very glad to represent the board there as a participant, as a judge, and Eric Coyne was our staff person who worked very hard on that. The event was put together in a very short timeframe, and it turned out very well for the time they had to plan, but a very good event.
Mr. Ashida?
Last week, we hosted approximately 28 outdoor riders that came into Tulare County, and thank you for the work from Eric Coyne representing our office and Leslie Kaviglia representing Visalia for putting a program together. They went up to the park. They went to Mineral King. Some of them went mountain bike riding, and they were very pleased with the recreational opportunities that they found in Tulare County. One of the participants mentioned that usually they get about 40 to 60 riders, I mean, well, outdoor riders that come in on these meetings, and we were a little short this year, but I think it's probably halfway explained that if you drive down 99, the only city we have in Tulare County on 99 is Tulare, the city of Tulare. Most people don't realize how many people live in Tulare County. Tulare County was basically developed on the east side. We have all the east side cities. They were all enthusiastic about coming back. Supervisor Cox and I met with them yesterday morning at the new Ag Farm Worker Museum. They were extremely impressed with the content of the museum, and in fact, several of them said they'd come back just to look at the museum. Last night, I had a town hall meeting in Lemon Cove, and the topic that, excuse me, Three Rivers, and the topic of that conversation was the ambulance service. After many, many years, Lemon Cove had an independent ambulance service, and the Board of Directors decided to suspend that service because of some changes in the state laws, and so last month, they closed their doors, and the other service providers in Tulare County filled the gap. So, now we have an ambulance stationed in Lemon Cove. Exeter Ambulance Company has two days a week. AMR Ambulance out of Tulare has two to three days a week, and they rotate with American Ambulance out of Visalia. And one of the board members mentioned that he believes the service is now is as good, if not better, than what they had before. And the ambulance response time, which is 20 minutes to Three Rivers, 95% of the, they're over 95% compliant in meeting that timeframes. So, three years ago, when the ambulance issue came up in Tulare County, we were looking at having one provider for the whole county, and the board supervisors decided that maybe we could get our independent companies to work together, while they have, and it's worked out the better service for everyone concerned in Tulare County. In fact, moving the, stationing the ambulance at Lemon Cove also helps response time to Woodlake. So, we have less and less jurisdictional fights between the independent ambulance companies, and they're working, in my opinion, very well together. Last Thursday, we received a call out of the blue. I think most of you are aware that they're removing the rail from Straffmore down to Joe Vista, and the last time I looked was last Saturday, and they were south of the city of Porterville.
Teapot Dome.
So, Teapot Dome Road, and they're moving quite quickly on salvaging the track. They're just putting the track over to the side. They're not removing the ties. But Thursday, we received an unexpected call from Short Hall Rail Company, which I cannot divulge the name of, that are interested in talking to TCAG about rebuilding that line, that 30 miles. So, the rail issue is just a moving target. You never know from day to day what may develop. So, we'll be talking, the TCAG representatives will be talking to this new rail company, and we've never talked to them before, and it shows the interest in Short Hall Rail nationwide, and this rail company is an east coast rail company. We'll see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Ashida. Mr. Ennis?
Thank you. You know, you left out Tipton and Pixley and along Highway 99. You know, those are some pretty good-sized metropolises, and it's coming too, so.
Like Terabella. Like Terabella.
Well, last week, Supervisor Ashida and I attended a fundraiser for Sierra View District Hospital on Saturday night, and it was a very nice event. It was at Larry Young's Indian Oaks Ranch, and they raised over $30,000 for Sierra View District Hospital, so I thought that was a very nice event. Of course, tomorrow, we'll be attending the Loop Bus Workshop in Porterville at 10 o'clock, which we hope will be very fruitful for that area. We'll also be going from there to Terabella to work on the logistics for a step-up event for the Terabella-Ducor Rich Grove area. So, that's coming up probably next month, and looking forward to that. Had a meeting with Brian Ward, who's one of the city councilmen with Porterville, him and John Lawless, the city manager, and working towards planning a step-up event for Porterville. So, things are starting to open up in that area, and hopefully, we're going to get some events moving forward. So, also, was very excited about our broadband meeting we had yesterday. That's going to be big influence in our area. Ducor, Terabella, Porterville area, Porterville College, and we're trying to attract as many people along that line to get them hooked up to this high-speed Internet. So, that's a $66 million project, 18 counties involved. So, nice future for Tulare County and these other 18 counties. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, I was going to comment on that broadband matter, too. It actually has quite a large influence throughout the county. Originally, I thought the northern part of the county was going to be left out of it, but the maps that were provided yesterday indicate that they're actually going to take in Dinuba going east to Cutler Rose, then north to Orange Cove, and back across to the city of Reedley. So, it actually will have a big impact on North County as well as the rest of the county, and this is an effort to bring broadband into the rural parts of the country and California where we have not had that in the past, and that's quite important to our future economic development. I met a family the other day that moved to Dinuba, and he works for Yahoo.com recruiting attorneys and accountants. He lives in Dinuba and works out of his home on a DSL line. So, it's a new day, you know, and you can be any place and have businesses, and the broadband really is a key component to that. So, that's a very good program. Something I wanted to comment on, too, and piggyback on a comment by Mr. Ashida, I'd like to have a follow-up with a report from the ambulance providers because, as you'll recall, what drove that three years ago was the complaints about the level of service we were having of ambulance providers in Tulare County, and Fresno, where the headquarters of our emergency services for that purpose are located, were really advocating for the single provider service. And we said, "You know, we really don't want to put our small business out of business in Tulare County. Let's give them the opportunity to try to come up with a system," and they have, and apparently, we are exceeding not only in Three Rivers, but throughout the county, we are exceeding the expectations of response times, and apparently Fresno was just absolutely astounded at how well this is working. So, I think it'd be really well to have a follow-up report back to this board about how successful that program is being, and a great example of county working with private enterprise to protect those jobs and those businesses in our communities. We've had a couple of implementation meetings this last week up in District Four and Goshen and in Cutler Rose. Our redevelopment agencies meeting with the public there to come up with plans for the next five years and redevelopment projects, and they were, both meetings were pretty well-attended in those communities. Happy to see that there's that involvement within the community, and it's just hopeful we'll be able to produce some good results for those people in this community in terms of housing, work opportunities, job opportunities, improvements that are communities. The big thing in my life, in our family's life, I should say, this week is that my oldest son is getting married. So, I'll be leaving Thursday to Sacramento for the wedding festivities, and there's a little work involved in there, too, but we're all very excited about that. Our oldest son is the first one to get married, and so that's what's going on. That will conclude our Board of Supervisory Matters, and just before we take up the timed item, I apologize for taking so long to get there this morning. We had a lot of items. I would like to get the consent calendar so that the folks who are here for that can get back to where they need to get. Item number 28 has been called to my attention to point out that we will be sitting as the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency when we act on that particular item. Are there any items on the consent counter board members wish to handle separately? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, amended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. That will then take us to our timed item. Item number seven is a public hearing request from the Resource Management Agency to hold a continued public hearing and deny the appeal filed by Robert J. Owen. And the process we normally follow is our staff makes a report, and then we allow the public hearing to proceed, and so we'll begin with our staff report. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worley, members of the board, Nick Hahn, RMA Planning. The item before you is an appeal filed by Robert Owen regarding decision of the zoning administrator denying a zone variance for property located on the east side of Road 52, approximately quarter mile south of Scranton Avenue, south of Porterville. The requested variance is to allow a division of a homesite parcel from a 4.7-acre parcel containing less than the minimum acreage required to qualify for a homesite division in the zone which property is located. The item was continued at the request of the applicant pending adoption of a homesite ordinance amendment. On August 10, 2010, your board adopted ordinance number 3412, amending the homesite parcel ordinance. The proposed division of land does not qualify under the requirements of the amended homesite ordinance because the site does not contain the minimum acreage required to qualify for a homesite division. The site and nearby surrounding properties are zoned AE10, exclusive agricultural 10-acre minimum. It should be noted that the AE10 zone serves as a holding zone to prevent urban encroachment uses that would be incompatible with the surrounding agricultural properties. The site is located outside of the Porterville urban area boundary, which is located just adjacent to the north and west boundaries of the property. This scenario photograph of the site, the proposed homesite location is at the northwest portion of the site, right there. The surrounding properties are primarily utilized for agricultural purposes. Proposed homesite parcel, as indicated, would be in the northwest portion of the site. It contains a single-family dwelling. The remainder of the property is vacant with the exception of a domestic well, which would be serving the homesite parcel and an adjacent property owned under a different ownership. The zoning administrator denied the variance because it cannot meet the required findings of approval and that the site does not contain unusual physical conditions to justify the proposed division. The existing residence on a parcel which contains less area than allowed in the applicable agricultural zone is by no means unusual as there are numerous instances throughout the county. They're similar. None of the existing four-to-five-acre parcels located to the south- None of the existing four-to-five acre parcels located to the south and east of the site have been further divided, and thus would constitute a, granting a special privilege if this variance were approved. And the division of a point-three-seven acre and four-point-three-three acre parcels would not be consistent with the agricultural designation of the site, as they are not considered viable agricultural parcels. Staff requests that your board deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator decision denying the requested variance, and subject any questions you may have. That concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions, report members? Not, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address us on this matter is invited to come forward. Mr. Owen, now would be your time.
Thank you, board. My name is Robert Owen, sixteen-one fifty-one Mustang Drive, Burnsville, California. I've been at this for over two years, hoping that the Planning Commission or whoever would come to a conclusion on this. I've met, I've been to most of the meetings. I only got to one of the stakeholders' meetings, but I'm in pretty persistent touch with the engineers and this sort of thing. Most of what they were asking for was a little bit different than what I am. It's already stated that this is not a viable agricultural site. By the time you take a thirty-foot easement for a road that services the properties in the back, and you take out the house, you're basically down to less than four acres. The property is not in the Williamson Act. It does have off-site water, which they don't refer to here, which means I could split it before down to less than an acre, but I can go an acre or two acres split. It doesn't make any difference to me. I'm just trying to make the highest and best use of the land. I am in real estate, I am a farmer, and I hate to see land out there growing weeds, grocers, and squirrels, and just generally not going to any use. Plus, all of that division ups the county tax rate, too. I have a, you're well aware that this has been called granting a special privilege. I've gone a long way in researching this special privilege, and I'm afraid I don't quite understand that particular philosophy. One part I did want to read in this ordinance was, "The Tulare County zoning ordinance fifteen-D, two-G, and H provides for the division of existing homesite parcels containing less acreage than required by agricultural zones, if certain requirements are met." The next sentence says, "The proposed division of land meets all of these except for the requirement the parcel being divided must contain minimum acreage requirement." It looks to me like one sentence offsets the other. You may have a different opinion, but that's the way I'm reading it. I just need to get on with this thing. It's been too long now. I realize what the county is doing in their ten-acre minimums. I agree that agriculture should be protected in this county, but I also think that other people should be protected in this county where it is not viable to raise agriculture. If I had a parcel that was adjacent to this, I wouldn't be doing this, but I don't. And I don't think any of you would disagree with the fact that farming less than four acres by itself is not going to be economically feasible. So if you would take a real close look at this, I don't look at it as a special privilege. It's a privilege we used to have back in the years before the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and I really don't think the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and I've been familiar with it for a long time, was meant to jeopardize one part of the county and improve the other part of the county. I don't think that's the way the supervisors would really want to look at it. You want to improve the whole county, and I'm in agreeance with that. So as I'm saying, you're restricting one, you're helping another, so. I really think that this has gotten a little out of hand on these small parcels, and that's, that's about all I have to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Anyone else wishing to address us this morning during the public hearing? Not, we'll close the public hearing. We have us on closed session, but I don't know whether there's any need for closed session. I do apologize to Mr. Owen for the length of time this has taken. Part of that was because of the board's desire to try to deal with your particular issue in a global type of a way in the county, and that led to our adoption of the ordinance that went into effect just recently.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a global question? Certainly. How many of these do we have in the pipe? I mean, are there ten more of these that applied a year and a half, two years ago, three years ago, that have been waiting for this ordinance process, which I know we've all been supportive of bringing to a conclusion? I mean, are there a lot of other projects in the pipe that are going to be coming our way?
I'm not sure the specific number, but I would guess that it would be in the realm of between five and ten that were requested to be placed on hold by the applicants pending the adoption of the ordinance. And some of those projects were probably submitted quite some time ago, and it was decided by those applicants not to proceed with a variance application pending the outcome of the amendment.
Did we spend all their money?
Um, I would, I would have to research that further and come back to you with an answer on that.
I know the, was it thirty-five-hundred, thirty-seven? I don't remember how much it was, but there was a, there's a, I know a deposit required to be.
Thirty-four eighty-nine.
Made, so about thirty-five-hundred dollars. I would, Mr. Chair, with, you know, with your permission, I would, you know, encourage staff to look at that because I'm not inclined to approve these, given the ordinance we passed, any of them, if they're less than the required acreage. So I just hate spending people's money, giving them false hope if we're ultimately going to deny it. So that would globally have staff look at that and not have people put a lot of money into projects because that's our fee. There have been other fees. I'm sure, I'm sure Owen has paid land surveyors or whoever, developers, to do the work on this, so it's a lot of money for folks to put out of pocket. In my opinion, not have a whole lot of hope at the end of the tunnel.
Anything else?
I just, I tend to agree with Supervisor Cox. I think that we have to, you know, there's a lot of deposits and a lot of money required, and if we're just going to take this money and kind of keep stringing people along, I think that's a real bad practice. So, you know, I know it was just all pending the zoning amendment and the whole process, but I just, I know that we've continued this, I think, five or six times since I've been on the board, and I've only been here two years. So it just, I feel, my heart goes out to the applicant because I just feel bad for stringing him along this whole time, and, you know, pending this zoning amendment, which I think we kind of foresaw coming.
One thing I do want to point out, and I'll let Jake speak, but this was a discretionary act. This was, so when anybody filed to request this, there was never a guarantee they were going to get this done.
Yeah, right.
And so in that respect, there was a certain risk involved in having proceeded with this. I think the action taken by the board with the adoption of the resolution or the ordinance is going to take away, people just won't even, they'll save the money because they won't bother doing it. And I think, and I think that's what you two are referring to, is that in this case, Mr. Owen was a little bit caught in the middle of this process, but he was never assured that he would be able to actually do what he attempted to do here. So I don't want to give the impression that he had the right to actually get this accomplished. It was a discretionary act.
Totally agree.
Any other questions? Mr. Jake, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Chair. Jake Raper, Director of RMA. Just wanted to restate what you had indicated is sometimes people insist on filing applications, and we do not turn those applications down. We do advise them that, especially for variance or specific findings that have to be made for granting of a variance. And we have had some cases, or at least one case that I know of, where they had a variance applied for, but after review by staff, they, the applicant withdrew the variance application, modified the parcel map to confirm, to conform with the rules and regulations, and that map was approved. So that dialogue is being, is occurring, and we're trying to encourage them to comply with the standards and the requirements adopted by the board. So just wanted to give that heads up. We can't say no to somebody wanting to submit an application. We're, we'll be happy to take their application, accept their deposit, and try to have honest dialogue and communication with them in addition to that.
I strongly suspect that after the adoption of the ordinance that we have, that there'll be far fewer of these applications made because it'll be much more stringent requirements to try to get around it, so.
And I think that that, your efforts have made it a lot more clear, or a lot clearer for applicants and for us as the board. You know, you just feel bad that Mr. Owen was caught in the middle of this, so, but I understand your point, and thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Owen, do you want to say something? Yes.
You know, gentlemen, it's, it's not about the money. It's about the land. It's the fact that the county is now saying, and I was here for the meeting when you approved this ten-acre minimum, that, okay, guys, all you folks over here that have lived here for thirty-five years, or you've lived here for five years, which is what they're calling for at the moment, we no longer give you the right to split off this homesite, whether it be one acre, two acre, half acre, because it doesn't fit into your minimum agricultural plan. And again, I'm saying that I don't think originally when this was set up, that ag was supposed to be so predominant that it left nothing for the other people who are not in basic ag. Again, I'm in both of it, but I'm not planning on trying to split up land and do subdivision and build eight houses. That's not what I want to do. I'd just like to see a fair shake between the ag people who want the same thing, and also, some of them try to split off smaller parcels, between the ag people and the other people that are trying to do something for themselves also. So I'm just not getting where this real split should be. Ten acres is a pretty good-sized parcel, if you're not a farmer. And I go around Porterville anyway, I don't know about Visaya or Tulare, and I see some of these parcels that are two and three acres, and alls I see is a bunch of junker cars, weeds, firetraps, and other things that are out there. I consider a ten-acre parcel viable. I think you can farm that. You're not going to make a living on it, but you could farm it and pay for what you do. But when you get down to the size I'm talking about, at three acres or less than five acres, unless you're growing something illegal, you can't pay for it doing strawberries. You can't put enough pigs out there to make enough bacon to do any good, so I don't know where that leaves them. And that, that's what I'm looking at, is the highest and best use of the land, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Time for discussion or further, or ready to make an action?
Mr. Chair, I would motion to deny the appeal.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. All right, this time, we will go to closed session. We do also have our addendum item. Counsel, or anything you need to say to us?
You do, Mr. Chairman. Item A is off agenda, and I understand that item F is off agenda. Labor negotiations are off agenda, so that would leave you with items B through G, including the closed session, item on the addendum. I do believe there will be an announcement. I do want to state for the public record that in the matter of item E, which is a disciplinary matter, this office, my office, represented the department head in the underlying administrative hearing, which is being reviewed by your board. Accordingly, we will not be attending the closed session as to that matter, nor will we be providing you with legal advice.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Did they actually vote? Actually, I guessed last time. This is Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on item E, in closed session, to consider the discipline of a public employee. On a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, the board voted unanimously to deny the appeal filed by a sheriff deputy.